Would appreciate it.
Douglas.
I might break a record here and get out of here by ten. In, that's ten in the morning. Okay. Thanks, everyone, for sticking it out, those who did. Okay. Let's go on to item number eleven. And just so you know, Brother Dooling is signed up for this one.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to table, pull this item until next month.
Really? Okay. We have a table-
If, if Mr. McCormick also agrees.
Do we have a second? We have a second. All in favor of tabling this to next month? Three? Ms. McLean? Table until next month. It's not hard. No? Okay, four to one with Ms. McLean voting no. Ms. McLean, thank you very much. Okay, let's move on to the next item. This is number twelve. Review tree trimming fees for possible action. Ms. Winger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The reason that I put this on the agenda is that you had brought up a little while back when we were discussing roofing permits, that people needed to be protected. And we discussed the fact that the roofing permits didn't actually do anything to protect them. So, I recently had to pull a tree permit, which I did, as I always do. And we had several trees trimmed and one cut down on two different dates. And then subsequent to that, the house next door to me was sold, and the Reichenbergers bought it, and they hired a tree trimming, and they got a permit. And then the people who moved in across the street also hired a tree trimmer, and they got a permit. So, everybody got permits. But at no time did anyone come by to see that the work was being done properly. These are oak tree permits. It matters because we had an oak tree that we did have to cut down, that we thought might have had oak wilt. And fortunately Janet was able to get the forestry agent to come out and look at it very quickly so that we didn't have any danger. Luckily, it wasn't oak wilt. But if we're going to have tree trimmers and nobody is ever coming to check on them, I don't see why we have permits. And I think we should do away with them.
Ms. Winger, you know what? I want to tell you that for once, we are on the same page.
Oh, my God.
Hey, uh, let me tell you something, and you're gonna hear a story because I've been here for sixty-four years, and I deserve it. And you do too, Ms. Jappett. You know, when I was a little boy, I was looking at a picture the other day when I was five years old, and there was a tree this big in our yard. And now that tree, you can't even put your arms around it right now. Within two hundred yards of my house, when we found this, was oak wilt. Two hundred yards.
Yeah.
And guess what? Now, within a hundred yards, it's confirmed oak wilt and moving.
Yes.
Unless something happens to me, which I'm sure someone out there or some would like for that to happen, I might see the day that oak wilt gets to sunflower. And I think that that's, I think this is one of the most important things that we have on the agenda for our tree canopy. And now we have a fire truck that can't get underneath these trees, and we're gonna be in there getting a lot of, a lot of people are going to go by the law. And I'll, well, understand. But a lot of people aren't gonna go by the law. And so, what are you proposing?
My point is that the reason that we have the tree permits, as we've discussed in the past, was so that we-
Point of order, do we have a motion and a second on the floor?
Uh, did you go ahead?
I, I did make the motion to do, to do away with the tree permits.
For, to talk about this item?
Second.
Okay, from Douglas. Go ahead, Leslie.
The reason that we have them is because we wanted to make sure that the people who were trimming the trees were doing it properly and painting the cuts. But if nobody comes to check, there's no assurance of that. All you have is a piece of paper that you put up. And of course, you know, the, most of us are gonna look at it. But in the case of both the house across the street and the house next door, nobody was around because nobody's living in either one of those houses. So, they simply hired the people. I watched the people that did it for us. But if I wasn't watching it, nobody from the city ever came by to talk to the tree trimmers and say to them, "Make sure that you're doing this." And so, in one case, it wasn't done for some time. It's not the homeowner, the homeowner's fault. It's the fact that nobody in the city is doing anything. So, either we should make sure that we have a process, or we should not be charging people for tree permits.
Good point. Rick, is there any way, and I'm just asking, what do I know? I can't even vote. But is there a way that we could coordinate with the permit office to find out which people have paid the permit and whether or not they did it correctly?
Oh, I know who they paid for permits. I checked with Janet. Everybody got a permit. That's not the issue. The issue is that nobody's checking.
Right, that's what I said.
Yeah.
If we had the garbage men, which are by there, what, twice a week? And they said, "At one fifteen, sunflower," that's where I live.
Your sanitation crew is doing that already, sir, as they already notify myself. I, myself, as I'm doing any type of inspections, I go by and check and see that somebody's doing tree trimmings. I make sure that they have their oak wilt per, their oak permit to make sure what kind of trees they're cutting. And then make sure, also contact the permit office to make sure that the tree service has that permit.
And that they're painting.
So, we're also checking as well if they have their paint cans on their hips as they're up in the trees to make sure they're painting the wounds, those special, those, at that size. But like Ms. Winger says, yes, okay, maybe we didn't get those ones. We don't know because we don't know all the areas. Maybe we're not getting, I guess, the heads up of those in particular residents that are cutting. And then, um, it, it's hard to get all around the city when we're all doing, I guess, different jobs for the city. But we are out there, co-compliance even too. They're checking, he's checking because I know I've gotten with him. We're finding out those permits are, are up on the, on the windows. And then I'll stop and make sure because we have even contractors who say, "Okay, well, we got a permit, but we're, have it for sunflower, but we're gonna go ahead and use it over there on Blue John." You can't.
Shame.
So, we find out, we find out that's happening, then we go ahead and double-find them if possible. Or we make, make sure we follow them in here to get their permit.
Would you do me a favor and get with Ms. Winger? And make sure that our process that we do, I'm not, I'm not trying to be funny here. I know I'm funny, but I'm not trying to be. That our process fits within what she's thinking about because all she wants to do, along with anybody else, is make sure that we don't spread oak wilt. And this is a serious problem.
Simple solution, if I can make a comment about it.
Of course, okay.
That the simple solution is that the homeowner's gonna look. The reason you have the contractor go out and get the permit is that he has to pay cash for it. He has to talk to the permit clerk, who's gonna tell him about the requirement.
No, you, no, you don't. We pull it up.
Wait a minute, I'm, I'm talking. Let me finish up what I gotta say before you butt in, if you don't mind. The permit clerk, when I was there and I went with my contractor, gave him the little pitch on painting the cuts and all that kind of thing. Nobody came out to inspect it because I called and asked, and they told me when I called in that we don't do that on tree trimming. Okay, that's fine. But I can go out and look at that, and I can call up the code compliance guy and say, "Hey, look, my contractor didn't do it. He's the one with the permit. You got his stuff. Call him up and give him a citation," which is the way that ought to be dealt with.
Do you believe that, I'm just asking this question. Do you believe that Rick should have some kind of paper that we coincide that with to make sure they're checked?
Well, he's got that kind of paper. That's what the permit is.
Okay.
I mean, he can call in and ask about a permit for two oh seven limonade or wherever.
Okay.
And as Mr. McCormick is saying, once that contractor pulls that permit, this is kinda like where we have our, our hands cuffed because when the resident gets that permit, they don't have to pay for the permit. Well, guess what? When the contractor gets the permit, as Mr. McCormick just mentioned, the contractor's liable for that. So, if they don't paint those, and then they ended up getting that, then they have to come out, but they can also be fined with that violation because they know-
Can we issue a permit, Ms.?
Wait a minute, wait a minute. We pay, we get our own permits. We always have. We've always paid for them because you can't cut an oak tree or anything else.
That's correct.
If another person is doing it, regardless of who pulls the permit, you have to have a permit if you have a professional tree trimmer.
That's true.
They don't have to pull the permit.
I've done some trimming of my own oak trees, and I've gotten a permit for me to do it. And it hasn't cost me anything.
Exactly. It doesn't cost the homeowner enough money.
Can we issue a permit, no matter whether it's, whether they're paying for it or not, so we can track all this?
Yeah, Mayor, probably the best way is to modify the application to have them sign and acknowledge that they will comply with the oak wilt, and they will paint.
Well, I got the permit for my own, for my own trees. I did sign. I did sign for it.
But nobody ever came by?
But nobody ever came by. But that's up to me. They're my oak trees. It's my interest to protect them.
It's not just your interest. It's your neighbor's interest. That's the point that Jim is making.
Of course it is.
Okay, everyone.
Well, again, at the end of the day, Mr. Hara's gonna go out and inspect. Ultimately, like Councilman McCormick says, our code enforcement officer will have to go out and issue the notice to the resident.
Okay. Go ahead.
This is an issue very close to my heart because we are currently treating for oak wilt. We're now having to treat every six months for the next two years.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor, I can't hear Mrs. Scott for the chatter in the audience.
Ms., uh, can we hold it down out there? Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Scott. Thank you.
Oak wilt, this is very near and dear to me. I live on Prins Drive. We do have oak wilt on our street. We are currently treating for it. We're having to treat our trees every six months for two years. So, it is near and dear to me that, that there is some sort of protection for not only myself, my neighbors. It needs to be looked at. But here's the problem that I'm having with, uh, Mr. Harada. Do, do you get a list every day, daily, of who's doing it and that sort of thing? Because I, I rode along with our building inspector this past week. And so, I saw the permitting process for remodels and new builds, and go with me. This is going back to inspecting trees. And it was quite involved. He had a list that he was given of all of the inspections he had to do that day. I rode along with him. It took a couple of hours to go through. And either they passed inspection or they didn't pass inspection. It came back into permitting. Then he had to go through each permit that we did that day. There were around six or seven of them. Some of them had multiple issues that he was looking at, plumbing and electrical, or finish out, or different issues. So, then they all had to be gone through and entered in the computer. He had to say if they passed or they didn't pass. If they passed, had to be entered, they passed. If they passed and something had to be done, like CPS had to be notified that the temporary electricity could now be attached to the new home, the residence. Then at that time, it was Janet who was running permitting would have to call CPS to have that done. If they failed their inspection, then the, if it was a residence, it was a seventy-five dollar fee for re-inspection, which then Janet, who was running permits, had to figure out and contact for a new date for the inspection, collecting that fee for a re-inspection, and all of that paperwork. So, I spent about four and a half, five hours watching the permit process being, gone through. And I, I watched Ms. Thalen struggle with all of that paperwork. After we got back, there were new plans that had come in that our inspector had to look at and put his stamp on and leave one. He took one, left one to go and file with the city, left one with Ms. Thalen. It's a long permitting day in process.
For what?
For building inspection.
Oh, I'm not talking about that.
No, but my point is I'm wrapping back around. So, now we're gonna add, in addition to inspecting for these permits on new construction or remodeling and all the other permits, plumbing, electrical, gas, all of those. Now, we're gonna add tree inspections, which I do think is important. But my point being is, is who is gonna do it? Who's gonna coordinate all of these permits?
That's my point. That's my-
Great.
But my point is we no longer have a permit clerk as of the first of January to coordinate all of this. So, if we are saying our trees are important, and dealing with oak wilt is important for ourselves and for our neighbors and for our communities and for our beautiful trees, who's going to do it? Who's gonna coordinate the permits without a permitting clerk? That's my question. Because just the permits on electrical, plumbing, gas, construction, those take a copious amount of time.
We're off the subject here. This is a point of order. We're not discussing building permits, so that-
But we're, we're talking about tree, we're talking about tree permits.
We can't simply decide to discuss some other subject. The fact of the matter is, all I'm suggesting is that if we don't have a process, or until this time as we have a process, there's no point in charging people for permits because nobody's looking.
I think if we do that, we've made a grave, grave error.
If we don't have a process, Mr. Mayor?
No, if we don't have a situation where we're checking these permits and to do away with a permit, you've, you've cut another income flow.
Yeah, but we're not supposed to be doing it for income. We're supposed to be doing it because we're protecting the trees.
Well, I hope they're doing it so oak wilt doesn't get in. How much does that cost you so far?
Oh, how much so far? In the thousands.
Okay.
Multiple thousands of dollars. I don't have an exact number because we've treated twice.
So, we've got to figure out a follow-up, and I think that that's the city manager's job.
Again, Mayor, I think that we can evaluate the process that's followed. You know, every day when we did have a permit clerk, from that standpoint, there would be an email at the end of the day sent to the inspector to say, "Here are the inspections for the following day." That could be added as far as the treatment, tree permits that would be needed to be reviewed the next day in copying our code enforcement officer for him to evaluate and go check. I mean, that's probably the best way for us to follow that process to ensure people are complying with the permits.
So, can that, well, we'd have to bring it back as an action item, but to add it-
It is an action item. It says, "In Possible Action," right now.
Review tree trimming fees. That's just the fees, is all that's listed, not the process.
Review tree trimming fees for possible action. Okay.
Right, so it's not the actual process. It's just the fees that we're supposed to be discussing. And I am sorry if I, I got off point, but I was trying to show that permitting is a process. And if we're gonna permit for the trees, it's gonna add to this process. But we're discussing fees, so we should get back to it.
Ms. Winger, this is your item on the table. Is there anything you'd like to do?
Again, I think that could be done administratively.
Process.
I'm sorry, Mr. Rapley, I didn't hear you.
I said, "I think that could be done administratively."
Okay. Acoustics in here.
Mr. Snoll. If we, if we look at this as an action item, the agenda item says, "Review tree trimming fees for possible action." And point out, it doesn't say anything about permits.
That's right.
So, it seems to me that any action that involves permits is in violation of the Open Meetings Act.
It would be, again, out of order. The only thing the council can do under this agenda item is address fees. Whether to continue to have fees or not have fees or, or increase fees, that, that would be pertinent to this agenda item. I think Mr. Rapley has heard the discussion. Has indicated that in terms of the process of having a inspection done, it can be handled through his assignment to the building inspector, at least for now. But if the council wants to create a very clear process, that would need a slightly different worded agenda item to be considered at the January meeting.
Okay, so, so basically, what you're suggesting here is I will pull the item and work with Mr. Rapley to make sure that we have protection in the future?
Something of that sort. You can bring it back next month.
Okay. Pulled.
Okay, so we have a motion for Ms., uh, thank you. And seconded by Mr. McCormick to pull. All in favor? Thank you. Okay, let's move on. Uh, wow, we're on item number thirteen already. We only have two more. So, let's do a discussion in possible action on revised.
We already did fourteen.
Thirteen.
Yeah, but we're at thirteen now.
Oh, good. You're right, Leslie. Thank you for pointing that out. Discussion in possible action on revised agreement with Langley and Benak for legal services as city attorney for the city.
Can I?
Yes, ma'am.
Can I make a suggestion? This is something that we have to go into executive session on, and the last item is not. So, why don't we just do the last item first?
No problem. Granted. I suspect that was a request, so. Discussion in possible action on ordinance number two one oh eight eleven thirteen D, amending the two thousand eighteen general operating budget and reimbursement to the City of San Antonio for San Antonio Fire Department expenditures per ACOG mutual aid agreement in the relation to the two thousand fourteen Wedgwood fire. Mr. Rapley? Mr. Rapley has just handed me a letter from-
Mayor, as you recall, this item was tabled-
Go ahead.
Sorry?
Go ahead.
This item was tabled from last month for review to look and find out if a claim had been put in with our, with our carrier being TML. And if it had not, then actually put the claim in to see if it would be something that would be suitable for a claim by the city. And first, we went through the process of looking into, and Chief Dover spent some time looking through the old Wedgwood files to find out if there was anything related to a claim that might have been submitted to TML at the time, and couldn't find anything. Ms. Davis pulled a historical report that we received from TML, which didn't have anything related to a prior claim on this item. And so, the next step for, for me was to submit through TML, which is a copy of the email here, which basically they have reviewed. And there's no coverage for costs related to this equipment. This is something that they wouldn't even consider as a claim by TML. And I wanted to bring that to your attention. The only time that TML would be involved as a claim is if the City of San Antonio turned around and sued us for the amount owed. That's as far as I've done, as far as research, to bring this item back. Yeah, there was, there was a TML claim back in two thousand fifteen, I believe. But it was in, related to the fire itself and what took place. But nothing in request of our submittal on this in particular as a reimbursement to San Antonio.
Mr. Counsel, let's get a motion and a second on the table. Go, oh.
Maybe we adopt the proposed ordinance.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Second, okay, Ms. Scott. Mr. McCormick, do you have any comments, sir?
No, this is way past due. Let's get on with it.
Thank you. Ms. Scott?
Yes, it does, it is. It's long overdue. If it's part of our mutual aid agreement, that this is what we cover. Let's move along. It's been four years.
Thank you. Ms. McLean?
I echo the same comments of Mr. McCormick and Mrs. Scott.
Thank you. Ms. Winger?
Well, I have a problem with TML in this case because, you know, if, I mean, what does it say? That we're not asking for use of equipment. The cost has to do with the damage to, to equipment. So, they're basically saying they're not gonna cover us. And when we're insured with them, we better find another insurance company.
Oh, Mr. Dover, that's an interesting subject. What is the process of, uh, when, when your men have been subjected to asbestos? And then the process required by the state? I'm not asking a question I already know, just in case anybody was wondering. I don't know. What, what is that process?
I, I mean, I can't.
When you get into, what did you do after the Wedgwood fire?
As far as remediation of our gear, it was sent through, well, essentially, it's called an extractor. It's a industrial-grade washing machine, if you will, designed to clean bunker gear. Unfortunately, our gear was not tested. In fact, my firefighters are still wearing the same gear. To speak to what the correct process is, I know San Antonio kinda is leading the charge in the state of Texas for cancer prevention with firefighters. So, this was part of their, you know, diligence to make sure that they're assuming the best practices and doing what they can to prevent this sort of thing. I, I honestly can't really speak to it as far as, it's recommended now that our gear get cleaned after every fire. We did that. We actually luckily worked very closely with Chavino Park. They have an extractor. We, we go to Chavino Park. They clean our gear. We're required by state requirements to have our gear go through an advanced inspection by an outside company that we contract with that does that annually. But as far as for TML or anybody else, I know in the past, we have personally submitted for our equipment that was damaged in fires. But I can't speak to our mutual aid partner.
It doesn't make sense. You know, the problem that, that we have with this is that I know that in my house, some years ago, we had to replace our roof. And it turned out that the tiles that were up there were asbestos tiles. So, luckily, they were being, they had to be taken off very carefully as a result. What if there had been a fire? There are other houses that have asbestos tiles still on them because they were never anything that couldn't be used at the time. So, if you haven't had to replace them, and we didn't replace them because they were broken. We did it for another reason, so I'm glad we did. But what if you have a fire in, in a house that has asbestos tiles or something, and we have, you know, the joint powers come in and other cities come in, and then they're gonna start claiming, and we don't have insurance to cover us for that? It's part of the fire. It's part of what they're supposed to cover. What would have happened if somebody had, had had, you know, physical damage to themselves?
Would have been a different claim altogether.
Well, but that, but the point is that how can they possibly say that they're not covering us for something that was part of a fire?
That's a question for TML.
And I don't understand, expect you to answer it.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm just saying, there's something wrong with the insurance, and we need to find it.
Thank you. The insurance- Douglas? Skip, did you have something to say?
No, I'll wait till Douglas gets to it.
Uh, Douglas, you have something to say about this? Thank you. Yes?
I do have one thing to say. We had occasion after the election last May to read a mutual aid agreement that we had to consider for some of the local cities. And, and expressly in that agreement, it stated that either party could ask the other city for reimbursement for expenses incurred as a result of the fire in the other city. So, this is a very standard practice for other departments who have come to your aid to ask for reimbursement for not, you know, hours or, or time on the fire, but for things that actually were damages or costs that they incurred for coming into your jurisdiction to help. And these are just accepted risks when we have these agreements with other cities.
I understand that. I'm talking about the insurance.
Okay. Well, the only thing that I'm-
Again, Mayor, this is, it's, it's not our equipment, and it's not something that TML will cover.
I get it. Okay, they said they're not gonna cover it. San Antonio says, "Give us our money, or we're gonna sue you." Okay?
Right.
I get it.
And so, the only way we get covered is if they sue. That's what he just said.
Oh, here we go.
You know, it happens that San Antonio was the only, only additional fire department that asked for this kind of reimbursement. I don't know what kind of involvement the other fire departments may have had. But San Antonio is entitled to ask for that reimbursement if they actually used the equipment and they were contaminated, need to be cleaned. They weren't damaged. They were just made dirty. And we're obligated to pay for getting them cleaned again. The insurance company is not, it's not, doesn't surprise me that they don't pay for it. They do their best not to pay for anything, whether they promised to or not. And I think that's to be expected. So, let's try to get this thing out of the way. Can we just have a vote on this now? I'll call for the vote.
Yeah, one person signed up. If he'll, Mr. Brother Dooling, did you want to say something? Thank you very much. Okay. Counsel has expressed their views. Brother Dooling doesn't want to say anything. Nobody else has signed up. Nope. So, let's have a vote. All in favor of the amendment as, the item as read?
Good.
It's unanimous. All right, moving along. Ladies and gentlemen, we are going to retire into a executive meeting to discuss our attorney with our attorney. And you're welcome to stay as long as you want.
Why don't we just stay here?
Oh, let's make them leave. Okay.
Right. Y'all go home.
Okay, I wanted to let you know that I didn't say that. And Brother Dooling, you still don't have to order off the value menu. still don't have to order off the value menu. But, uh, thank y'all.
Are you going to make an announcement?
Thank you. I'm not going to admit it, but I have to admit, I noticed it the other day.
Douglas has an announcement.
I'm not sure if I ran through that or not.
We're not coming back, we're staying here.
We're not, we're staying here. Okay. Okay, you ready? Okay, here we are. Item thirteen. It is now-